First thing is to appoint alternates. We have, no, we don't have Donna, do we? Donna or Bruce? Okay, I think Bruce is gonna come in. So we, Donna and, I'm sorry, Diane and Melissa are appointed. Diane for Donna and Melissa for Bruce. The next is the approval of the minutes. The minutes of April 19th. We just uploaded those revised minutes. And I think, I'm gonna make a minute to make sure everything is correct with those. Anybody have any comments on them?
There are a couple of little typos. My name is spelled wrong on line 13. And Mike's name is spelled wrong on line 24.
Do you know where in the zoning, in the Dropbox link that Mike sent, those would be located right now?
Melissa, I always put in the, I click on the little hamburger button and I put it by date and that's how I find stuff. It's the only way I ever find things in there.
Hmm.
Little three bars.
Hamburger button.
Yeah, it's like the three line.
Oh, look at that.
That's what it's called. I didn't just make that up.
And how do you, how do you make it go by date?
Well, it just sorts, then it shows you the file information.
I see 1603 Hot Meadow Correspondence Industrial Regs, blah, blah, blah.
It's not in a folder.
Zoning Commission Meetings 419?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. See you in there.
Diane, what line was that that you said?
Um, oh, that's funny. I was just, I swear I was looking at line 13, but now maybe I was looking at the old one. Now I see 17 and 24. Oh, no, 13, I was right. Line 13 is my name and 24 is Mike's name.
I have an extra E.
And I have an extra N.
Does Pullman and Comley have two L's in it?
I believe it does.
Just double check.
All right, we're looking at April 19th. I don't see anything in line 13.
Nothing in line 13 in April.
Now, the, the changes that Diane is referencing are in the May 3.
Oh, that's May 3rd, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the May 3rd minutes, the most recent meeting.
Okay, so Pullman and Comley, Pullman is misspelled in line 46.
Correct, and it's two L's.
Okay, is there any other?
Oh, it's Comley, not Conley. It's C-O-M-L-E-Y. Pullman is spelled P-U-L-L-M-A-N, then it's and Comley, C-O-M-L-E-Y.
Thank you. Anything else in here?
Just taking a quick peek for the first time.
Has a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I move.
You can second it somewhere?
I'll second it.
Mike seconded. Kevin, yeah, made the motion. Bruce is in, so Melissa's out. Okay. Evening, Bruce.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Carrie, six, nothing. Okay, the minutes of May 3rd. Line 13, Diane Madigan is misspelled.
Yeah, sorry, I got ahead of us there.
Wait a minute, it looks right to me. What am I, what's the spelling?
D-I-A-N-E, one N.
D-I-A, ah, okay. Fix that later on by using D.
That, I will answer to D, no problem.
I will not answer to Doiley. I was called that my entire childhood and I'm sorry, I refuse to continue to call Doiley.
All right, and there's another extra E on line 24. All right, anything else? This, on line 45, is this the right spelling of the professional engineer's name, Mike? ZX is correct. Okay, then I think it's.
Does Mike know we can't hear him?
Mike, we can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry, I was still on mute. Yeah, line 45 is the correct spelling of his name. I'm sorry, the other ones should be changed to that. That's my, that's my fault.
Okay, where's the other one? What line?
49 is right.
Line 132.
Dave, the only thing I would add is that.
Line 132 is misspelled. ZX. Okay, any others?
Dave, I would just add that I came in late to that meeting, so I wasn't present at the beginning, but I came in and I was there.
Melissa, I can't understand you. What are you saying?
Oh, on the May 3rd meeting, I'm not listed as being present and I wasn't there at the very first, but I did come a little bit later, so I was present. Although not seated.
So add Melissa to the present.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike? Anything else?
Jumping ahead a little, lines 55 and 56.
Yep.
Uh, it looks to me like the starting 2:07 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I think that goes at the end of this will be limited, you know, at the end of this, that next sentence. I don't know, it doesn't seem to belong where it's sitting. It's not a sentence.
Bruce, there's an, there's an updated set of minutes that were put up about noon today that have that corrected. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it started out with that as the lead-in to the sentence.
How about number eight, line 71, did you get that thing with detect?
A change to contamination.
Well, I'll have to look at another set later. I don't wanna hold the meeting up here.
Okay, anybody got any other changes?
Who to approve the minutes as amended?
Second it.
Second line, Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, any abstain? Nope. Six, nothing, it carries. Thank you very much. Okay, the next order of business is we have a public hearing to open. I think I should note to start with that we're waiting for the town engineer to pass on some new, so we'll open the public hearing and have the applicant present his application and, and then we'll table. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, can you read the call?
Public hearing, application number 21-10 of Valley Recreation LLC, owner, MAC5 Development LLC, applicant for special exception, exceptions pursuant to section 4.5 for outdoor storage associated with retail business and section 10.2.5 parentheses A for a reduction of 55, reduction of 55 of the required parking spaces for the construction of a new retail building at the property located at 1603 Hot Meadow Street, accessories map H02, block 403, 002B Lot, Zone B2.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to clarify when you make your presentation is that 55, our zoning regs, I think, talk in terms of percentages. So if you could tell us how many 55 is, that would help. Okay?
Okay. I think, I believe that means we're up, right?
You're up.
All right. Well, members of the commission, my name is Matt Darling, I'm with MAC5 Development. We've been doing development, mostly retail development across the state for the past 20 or so years. I've been with the company now for the past seven. And we're here tonight to present a tractor supply company in place of the bowling alley that's there now. With me is my engineer, Jim Cassidy, and he's designed this. He's been our engineer on, oh, I don't know, Jim, probably a couple of dozen different projects. You know, we've developed about 45, 46 tractor supplies across New England mostly, some in New York. And Jim has been on our team for all of the Connecticut and some of the New York projects. So I'm here to answer any questions related to the business operations, even though Tractor Supply will be my tenant, we don't operate the store. Tractor Supply, they have 2,000 stores, are based out of Tennessee. They will become my tenant once I build them a building that they can occupy. And so, but I can answer any operationally related questions. And Jim can go ahead and present the, the engineering aspect of it and answer any questions related to that. So I think if, if Jim, you ready, I think you can take it away.
Yep. So first of all, start off, my name is Jim Cassidy, I'm a professional engineer and principal with the firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy, here tonight representing MAC5 Development for the development of a piece of property at 630 Hot Meadow Street in Simsbury, for, as Matt mentioned, as for a proposed tractor supply. The existing owner is Valley Recreation LLC. I'd like to start, is it okay to share my screen? Can everybody see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, first order of business, we did post a public hearing sign 15 days prior to the meeting. We've submitted an affidavit that that sign has been posted and maintained for that period of time. In addition to, as part of your application, we are required to reach out to the Fire Marshal, to WPCA, and to the Farmington Valley Health District. What we've also submitted is confirmation email that the plans have gone to the Fire Marshal, the plans have gone to the Farmington Valley Health District, and we had to FedEx or UPS the plans to the WPCA, which they also have, so all that has been taken care of. As I mentioned, what we're here for you this evening is we're seeking a site plan and special exception application for the development of a piece of property at 1603 Hot Meadow Street for a proposed tractor supply. The retail building will have a footprint of 19,758 square feet. In the middle of the plan here, you'll see a location map, so it is located on Hot Meadow where my hand is running back and forth. It's almost at the Granby Town Line, north would be off to the right on this plan. As part of the package that we submitted, you, was included in A2 Property Survey, a little bit about the existing site. The overall property area is 2.5943 acres of B2's own land, located on the westerly side of Hot Meadow Street, Hot Meadow Street being here on the bottom, and again, north being off to the, up to the right. And it's bounded on this north and on its west by open space of the Brentwood Drive Homers Association. It's bounded, continuing on the west and partially to the south by existing residents along, I think it is, I'm sorry, I skipped a line here, Laura Joe Way. And then bounded on the south, in this location here, by a town of Simsbury Open Space. Technically, what this open space consists of is there's a detention basin that was constructed as part of the Simsbury Pines subdivision. I'm gonna flip to an existing site photo. This is the site photo we pulled off of Google Earth. As was mentioned, there is an existing building on the site. It's formerly the bowling alley here in Sue's Berry. Address, again, 1603, kinda located, I'll say, to the northwest of the end of the property. That building is a one-story concrete masonry unit structure. It has a total footprint area of about 20,464 square feet. In addition to the bowling alley on the southern end of the property, you can see the miniature golf course that was constructed several years back. And then between the bowling alley and miniature golf course, there is an existing parking lot to provide not only service to bowling alley, but to the miniature golf course. There are presently two curb cuts out to Hot Meadow Street. And the, again, the overall property outlined in yellow, and you can see the existing vegetated, richer vegetated row around the perimeter of the property. What we're proposing to do is to develop this site, as we mentioned, with a new tractor supply retail store. This is a site plan that was submitted, slightly colored up as part of the application. The new store would be a one-story structure with a footprint of 19,758 square feet. The existing building would be removed, demolished and removed from the site. One of the reasons for doing that, if I would go back to the existing condition survey and blow up on it a little bit, one of the things that you'll find is that the existing structure is non-conforming, is presently non-conforming to the 10, or the, sorry, the 20-foot sideyard setback. It's being about 5.6 feet off of this property line, and same thing on the rear yard setback. It's a 25-foot rear yard, it is 20.3 feet off. So it's an existing non-conforming building. When we took a look at it, the original idea was to actually modify that building, but for all the work and improvements that needed to be made to it, we actually found ultimately be better to demolish the building. In addition to the new building, again, having a footprint of 19,758 square feet, you'll see some light gray areas. This front area is a concrete sidewalk in addition to its outdoor display area. If everyone's been to a tractor supply, it's a retail operation that likes to be able to cater to the gentleman farmer. On that sidewalk display area, we have such products, as we call it a seasonal sidewalk display, so you have such products as lawnmowers, log splitters, and snow blowers, seasonal items out for display. In addition to, on this particular development, you'll see off to the north here, there's another light gray area. This is a greenhouse area, this is a new product that Tractor Supply is coming out with, that would be displaying plants within the pad, and it will have a roof structure over top of it to keep everything out of the elements. That garden center will have an area of about 5,766 square feet. And then off to the north of that, you'll see a driveway that accesses around the back of it to another concrete pad. That concrete pad will have a ramp on it, this will be our loading area. They'll provide access to the rear door of the building and eventually into the store. In addition to, off to the south, where the present miniature golf course is, we also have another concrete pad. Tractor Supply typically has a, what we call a fenced-in outside display area that's attached to the building, because of the strange configuration of this property, this is gonna have to be a detached area. This will have a high chain link fence around the perimeter. This is an area that Tractor Supply will store products that are too large to be in the store. They do not sell tractors, but we do sell implements for tractors, such as brush hogs, you know, York rakes. We'd also have products in there like corralling for fence, a piece of corral for a horse fence is about four feet high and about 20 feet long. So their all items are too big to be in the store. What'll happen with this area is that there will be a gate on the northern end, another gate down here on the westerly end. If a customer needs to purchase those larger products, they can go into the store, make their purchase, a sales clerk would come out, they'd be able to open up the gate, they'd be able to drive in that area, load up those products, and then they'd open this gate and they'd be actually to pull out and continue on. In addition to, on this concrete pad, you'll see this other crosshatch area. This is what we call a permanent display, a permanent trailer display area. Tractor Supply also sells like black landscape trailers, not big box trailers, but smaller 12-foot long, the black, smaller residential trailers for hauling around lawnmowers and other utility type vehicles. So that crosshatch area has an area of about 3,000 square feet. Once again, product too big to be in the store, but we wanted to put it and secure it someplace safe. Also within this area, we are proposing a propane dispensing unit rather than having like blue rhino containers. Tractor Supply actually has a dispensing unit with a cover. Once again, if a customer wanted like to, would like to get a propane refill, they can come to the store, make the purchase, and the sales clerk would come out and actually fill up the propane, and that would be in a secure area, covered, also surrounded by bollards, so it can't get bumped into, and it's also with, entirely within the fenced area. To the front of the building, we're proposing to basically rip up all the existing, the tumidous pavement. We're gonna be building a new parking lot. We will be eliminating one of the curb cuts, there's presently a curb cut at this center location. That curb cut will be going away. We're going to reshape the existing curb cut at the north end of the property, and that will be the only access into the site. In addition to the curb cut and drive aisles, we are proposing to have the parking area in front of the building. This parking lot consists of a total of 65 parking spaces. 62 of them are going to be what we'll call regular spaces with a dimension of either 10 by 20, or there's a few in this area that have a dimension by 9 by 18, which meets your requirement. Tractor Supply usually likes to have a space a little bit bigger, being 10 by 20, because a lot of the customers are driving larger vehicles such as pickup trucks. So they'd have something a little bit larger. In addition to, you'll see three spaces in this area. This is what we call pull-through spaces. This is for a customer that would come in with a trailer attached to the back of the vehicle, they'd be able to pull into these spaces, and as I was mentioning previously, if they do buy those larger products and they need to get into this area, this, again, the sales clerk can come out, open the gate, they'd be able to pull their vehicle with the trailer into this area, be loaded up and then continue through and then back out into the main drive aisle. So we're proposing a total of 65 spaces. As was mentioned, as part of our special exception permit, we are actually asking for a reduction in the total number of parking spaces per your regulations, sorry. For your regulations, we're supposed to have, sorry. Lost my space there. We're supposed to have a total of 120 parking spaces based upon the proposed retailer in the building that we have on the site. For a typical tractor supply, we range anywhere from about 60 to 75 parking spaces. As part of our special exception permit, we submitted a few letters from different municipalities that we've developed tractor supplies in in the past, all indicating that anyone we have proposed, that number of parking spaces has been more than sufficient and never been an issue. The one advantage to tractor supply is we have a much lower customer count than your typical retail operation, such as a grocery store or pharmacy. In addition to, if for some reason, which I've never seen it happen, if tractor supply doesn't work out and they have to move out of this and you have a retail building that someone else would need to occupy, what we can do, and we submitted as part of the plan, is we submitted what we call the deferred parking plan. So what happened is that the concrete display area could be eliminated. That area then can become a parking lot instead. If it became a parking lot, that area can accommodate, right now on this plan, we have a total of 120 spaces. I'm sorry, we had needed 109 spaces per the regulation. We have a whole total of 120 spaces on this plan if we were to, if, if it wasn't to work out as Tractor Supply and some other retail user came in, there's more than adequate parking on this site. As was mentioned, your parking requirement looks for reductions in percentage. It says you can defer up to, sorry, 50% of the total number of parking spaces. If, excuse me, we're proposing to defer 55 spaces, so with 109 required, that would put us right at the 50% mark if we were to get 55 parking spaces deferred. So again, we feel that there's more than adequate area on it if some other retail use comes in. We do not really need that many, and all the other tractor supplies we have done in the past have been more than adequate with the number of parking spaces. A couple other things we have to present this evening. This is just an overlay of the proposed development on the original site photo that I showed you. So again, this is the exact same footprint that we were originally proposing. This gray area would be the fenced-in outside display area and then the parking area to the front. One important thing I would note is if you were to take a look at the existing vegetation and what's cleared out there today, we are primarily proposing to keep the existing tree line that's out there. Along this westerly side, that is the existing tree line, it's actually located in the field, so there's no clearing actually required for the development of this site. Along this little property line here, as I mentioned, the existing building is only about 5.9 feet off the property line. So we're actually pulling the building back, there will be some regrading and clearing, but there's no additional, or regrading of the area. There's no clearing going on this area. The same thing along this westerly property line here, there's no additional clearing going. All this pavement is on the limits of the existing paved area. We've actually pulled the, there's, if you were to look at the existing condition survey on the backside here, if you take a look at the existing limits of pavement, you'd find it's far beyond the setback line. There's actually a conex box back here. So we're actually proposing to keep all our pavement within that existing area. Actually, in this back area, we pulled the pavement back, so it is at the 25-foot line. This concrete pad is at a 25-foot line, so the pavement that's existing in this area is actually being removed. I've also included in my presentation here, just so everyone can get a feel for it, the red line is the limits of the existing building, the tan rectangle would be the new building. So you can see how it's been pulled back and rotated and brought forward to once again increase the buffer to the existing properties to the west and to the south here. This little red rectangle here is the existing shack that, or the existing shed that services the miniature golf course. I'll also note, it's some other things we've done, you'll see this, oops, sorry, this little orange clouded area, as part of this application, we did go before the zoning board, I'm sorry, the zoning board repeals, we did receive a variance to allow for parking over the front 25-foot setback. The reason that we did this, and hopefully we're able to justify it, we did justify it with the zoning board repeals, but by doing this new configuration, pulling this slightly forward and relocating the building, it allowed us to eliminate that additional curb cut that we had talked about. This actually had a reduction of about 819 square feet of previous coverage over the front building lines for which presently exists. So it was actually to the advantage to convey it this way and get the variance, to have these parking spaces over. At the end of the day, when you take a look at the zoning table for the BT2 Zone, the first column is the required, the second column is the existing, third column is what I actually proposed, which you would find is that presently is, the site is not conforming to previous coverage, not conforming to the sideyard setback and not conforming to the rear yard setback. We are going to reduce the overall previous coverage. We are going to make the side yard conforming and along with the rear yard conforming. In addition to the mentions, parking spaces required, you require 2.75, 500 square feet, so we need a total of 109. We are actually gonna be at, I'm sorry, 65, 65, so we're looking for a reduction of about 65 parking spaces. Continuing on a little bit about the utilities, our stormwater management. If you were to go out to the site today, there's a series of catch basins winter than park lot. There's regular catch basins with no controls, no hooded outlets, nothing to treat stormwater quality as it runs off this site. Those catch basins are all located either on this northern property line or along the front of the site. Those catch bases presently discharged into a drainage system that runs along the state highway. We are going to be building a new drainage system as part of this development. All the catch basins will be interconnected, they will be deep sumps with hooded outlets to collect any floatables that would be on the site. In addition to, they're going to discharge to a small underground drainage system or infiltration system in this area. We did this because this allows us to, at this point, treat the first flush runoff off the site post-development, which doesn't occur today. It's a very small system, it's a series of galleys, underground galleys, there will be controls, a control structure at the outlet that will attenuate the flow before it discharges into the state drainage system. So you're gonna pick up stormwater quality measures, improvements with this proposed development. Here's a little cross-section through the system. Again, it's a series of galleys that will allow the water to be able to also infiltrate or recharge into the groundwater. Site utilities, one of the big advantages of this site is it's presently serviced by public water and public sewer. Site utilities, uh, one of the big advantages of this site is it's presently serviced uh by public water and public sewers. There's a public sewer main that runs along the whole frontage. Uh, the existing building is actually serviced by a public sewer line. Uh, there's actually a manhole in the site. Um, we'll remove the existing lateral that goes from that manhole to the existing building. Constructing a new lateral down the side of the building and tying into that manhole. So uh, there's already public sewers right onto the site uh that we can tie into. In addition to, there's a water main along the front of it. Um, there is water service to the building, but we will be bringing in new six inch fire protection line. A new one and a half inch domestic water line into the building, so uh the building will be safer uh and protected by wild water. Um, I'm not going to go through the erosion set of a control plan, but we did submit a full erosion set of a control plan as part of the application. Uh, we also um have a site lighting plan. Uh, we're proposing to put three lights uh poles within the new parking lot. Uh, there'd be one here uh to the east of the outside display area, uh, one in this island here and additional one in this island here. Uh, these two will be quad headed fixtures. Uh, these will be a double headed fixture. Uh, these will be uh poles mounted on a concrete base. Uh, the total height of the fixture will be at twenty feet. Uh, all the lighting is proposed to be uh energy efficient LED lighting, dark sky compliant fixtures. Uh, what the lighting diagram shows is that we do not have a disperse of lighting uh onto the adjoining properties. Uh, we do have a couple of wall mounted lights on this north wall and then one in the back here over this loading area. Uh, but once again, when we, these will be all uh LED high end energy efficient fixtures. Uh, with dark sky compliant. Uh, and once again, when you take a look at the lighting diagram, you'd find we have no disperse of lighting onto the adjoining properties. Um, signage, uh, we did submit uh our proposed signs as part of this application. Uh, the front sign uh we're proposing is a monument sign. It will consist of a raised or not a raised panel, but a a box sign. Uh, the overall sign area is thirty two square feet, so the dimension is four six high by eleven six wide. The letter area would be ten by thirty two, uh, so that will give you the area of thirty two square feet. Total height of the sign is eight feet, uh, so it's under your ten foot high requirement. Uh, in addition to, uh, we'll have a sign mounted to the front of the building. Uh, this sign has an area of eighty two point seven square feet. Uh, I believe per your regulations, we're allowed to have one square feet for every linear foot front of the building. Um, which this building is a hundred and fifteen uh feet wide as it faces the road. Uh, so the combination of the two is just slightly under the hundred and fifteen square feet. Uh, this sign uh also would be a uh box sign attached to the wall. We were proposing it to be an eternally illuminated illuminated sign. Uh, I understand per your regulations, that's not permitted. Uh, if you would like to talk about it, I'd love to talk about it because we do it a little bit differently. But we understand uh using requirements and if it's not, uh, we'll have um some uh goose neck lights above it to help light up the sign. And ground mounted signs for the monument sign. The building itself, uh, it is going to be a one story structure. Um, it is a concrete masonry unit building. Uh, this is a example of the prototypical front of a tractor supply building. Uh, that was prepared for this project. Um, so the front wall is a uh CMU split place concrete block structure. Um, the overall height of the building is twenty feet eight inches to the top of the parapet. Uh, there is a front vestibule that sticks out about uh six feet from the face of the building. Uh, this vestibule, the awning over the top of it is constructed out of a galvanized vertical seal siding. Uh, there are two columns on either side of the uh of the vestibule. Uh, then there's a storefront glass uh that's underneath that awning, uh, that's flush with the edge of the vestibule. In addition to, there'll be an awning that runs out of the vestibule on either side. Uh, this provides some shelter uh for that sidewalk display area. This is made out of the same material. It's a galvanized uh seal siding uh that comes down at a slight angle. Uh, so if you look at it in the profile uh or cross section, uh, this is the awning that we're talking about that hangs out from the side of the building. Along the front of the building, as I previously mentioned, there are a couple of goose neck lightings uh that hang over the front side. Uh, these lights provide uh light for the front uh sign area. Uh, then there's a few wall packs uh that are also on the front of the building, but again, they are high efficiency LED fixtures. They provide some um light down on the awning area uh that's down below. Um, the colors for the building are proposed to be uh the first four feet is going to be something called sand sandalier. So it's like a taupe type color, uh, and then the upper portion is a tan color. Uh, this could refer to it, uh, referred to as urban putty. And then there's typically a red band along the top and then along the edge of the awning, uh, that's a signature red that tractor supply uses. It's called the safety red. Uh, and then along with the trim on the awning is also in that safety red. That's the typical colors that a tractor supply would use. Uh, the the AC units or the HVAC units are mounted on the roof. Um, the advantage to this site is the building will be sitting slightly above the road. Um, so when you're actually standing out at the road uh with this front parapet wall, you actually do not see these units as they're mounted on top of the roof. Uh, but rather having ground mounted units, we typically put them up on the roof area itself. Uh, we've also submitted a landscaping plan as part of our application. Um, the landscaping plan consists of basically some lower islands along the front, two eyebrows here. Uh, with some lower shrubbery planted in it. And then there's a small island along the fenced and outside display area, once again with some low shrubs planted in it. And then a few uh canopy trees or or ornamental trees when each one of the islands. Uh, we did throw a small section of evergreens in here uh to hopefully uh close up uh any openings in the existing buffer uh from our parking area. As I mentioned, and we actually showed on our survey, uh, when you look along this westley property line, uh, there are a lot of larger um. Or I'd say mature uh deciduous trees, uh, eighteen inches running down to about twenty inches. Uh, we are proposing to save all those along that property line. In addition to uh the landscaping, there is presently a stockade fence. Uh, it runs all the way down this southerly profit line, down this westley profit line, back down this profit line. And all the way along the back and it actually continues down a ways down on the north property line. Uh, that fence would be remaining uh in place, uh, so there's additional element of screening that's already in place. Uh, that we're proposing to leave as part of this application. Uh, I did submit a whole uh a breakdown of how we feel we fit into a special requirement permit uh for the outside display area. Uh, some other things I should note uh are uh basically a tractor supply. Excuse me. A typical tractor supply hours operation are going to be from like eight AM to about nine PM. Uh, site lighting on this site uh would be on, it's on a timer, uh, and it's also on a photocell. So it will only go on at um dusk. Uh, and it goes on, it goes off one hour after close of business, so the employees can safely get out of the facility. Uh, a typical tractor supply. Sorry. Let me go to our screen here. So uh typical tractor supply, um, again, as I mentioned, we have a low, we are a low traffic generator. Um, we typically have during a weekday, we have a daily count of anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred customers. Uh, at a peak hour, there's about uh twenty to thirty uh customers. Uh, during the weekends, uh, we have a customer count of about two hundred to three hundred and fifty customers, uh, with a peak hourly count of about thirty to fifty. Average time in the store for our customer is about fifteen to twenty minutes. Uh, so we have a slower turnover. Uh, and then we also do not have a high volume of customers actually going into the store compared to other retail operations. I think what you find overall is that the traffic generation from this site uh would be significantly less uh than other uses such as the uh bowling alley that previously was in play. On this property, um, that bowling alley obviously had higher uh generation of traffic at later hours, uh, but had a much more that would come out of the site. Uh, and also we have a significant less number of parking spaces associated with this site. Um, we feel that the uh traffic uh on this proposed development would be uh minimal um based upon the infrastructure roadway system that's out there. Uh, we looked at the uh average daily traffic on um on Hot Metal Street. And it's only about eighty nine hundred, uh, so it would be a minimal mix uh going into the existing traffic generation on this site. So I'm not gonna bore you too much longer. Um, so with that, I'm gonna conclude my presentation. Um, and I'll hopefully answer any questions that the commission may have at this point in time.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Uh, commission. Who would like to ask the first question?
Well, I I'd be happy to start the with the uh drawing that you're showing right now, uh, Mr. Cassidy. I I can't tell what the surface is in that outdoor display area. Is that asphalt?
It's concrete. It's a poor concrete.
Concrete, okay.
So, sorry, all the lighter gray surfaces, it shows a lot better on this. All the lighter gray surfaces are going to be concrete.
Okay, so. That space, um, I'm I'm thinking ahead to a future owner that uh might need more parking. That that's that concrete's a five inch slab or something like that.
Yes, it's designed for having vehicles drive over the top of it, so like a truck, yes.
And and remind me again, what's the structure that's on the north side of the long side? It's for use for a, no, a little bit to my left. No, you just went over it. It's long and narrow and it's for uh products like uh that are associated with gardening.
Yeah, so this is a new new thing that tractor supply is doing. It's a garden center, uh, so they get a lot of plant uh materials out on that pad. Uh, it does have a roof structure, a greenhouse type roof structure over the top of it.
But it doesn't have any, it just has the the shared wall with the building and no other walls?
Yeah, it has a uh a greenhouse uh wall material on on the outside, the outside edge of it.
So the it's it's totally enclosed then is what I'm getting at. It's not, it's not like Home Depot and loads.
Oh, what? So this is something that's really new that tractor supply is doing. I'm gonna let Matt chime in a little bit here. Uh, because it's been kind of go go back and forth of what they're actually gonna do with this.
Uh, yes, uh. It's not fully enclosed. Um, it does have some molding heaters, but other than that, it's not air conditioned. Uh, it is, the sides are open. Uh, they do have some, um, I don't want to call them a canvas, but it's a. It's like a canvas, but it's the same kind of translucency as the glass paneling that um is on the roof. And it kind of rolls up and down. Uh, it's primarily rolled up. Uh, a- a- aside from times when it's inclement weather. Um, but yes, it's a partially enclosed greenhouse type structure that's designed to move air through it and to be able to grow. Uh, plants and maintaining plantings uh year round. Aside from the deep of, you know, the deep of winter, you're not gonna sell plants other than that.
So the deck in that space is also concrete or?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Then moving along here, out in the front, the curb cut that you uh no longer need and have removed from the, you know, the plan. I just want to make sure I understand what that means, that if a future tenant wants two curb cuts. In my understanding, then they would have to go back to, it's not your job to necessarily deal with, but. The future owner or future tenant would have to deal with the DOT to get improvement, uh, approval for a second.
Yes.
Being abandoned.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Kevin? Mike?
Dave, are we still in public hearing? Can I comment?
Yes, you can.
I just, it's not a question. I just wanted to say that I appreciated uh the applicant's care that they took in providing screening for the alternative budding. Residential properties and especially the fact that they took a look and realized that there might be. Um, some gaps in the screening and providing the additional evergreens and I I really appreciate their um. They're being a good neighbor to the residential budding property owners.
Thank you.
Kevin, Nicky?
Um, just to reiterate, you know, they mentioned that we don't allow the internally illuminated and so. We would look for the alternative uh for the monument site as well as the one on the side of the building.
Sure, and as you know, uh, you you know, we can either revise plans or even a conditional approval, uh, that it'll be externally illuminated. Uh, the goose neck lighting uh on the front of the building would be used for the wall mounted light and we'd obviously have to use a uh ground mounted light uh shining up on the sign for the monument sign.
Right. Works. And then, you know, and then we have landscaping requirements for the monument sign.
Yeah, so we did show proposed landscaping around the the base of that sign also, so we we did have a landscaping background.
And where where in your drawing here is that going on the south side of the entrance?
I'm sorry, I should have. I thought I was, I I'm I'm kind of kind of a little short and thought it was kind of rambling on there, so.
Well, you actually did a really thorough presentation, so that was good.
Thank you. So the monument sign is gonna be in this island. Um, so we have some shrubs and some lower plantings around the perimeter of it. Uh, right now, those shrubs consist of, um, it looks like we have some uh gold mountain sprays, spirea. Um, and I think to the front of it, I had, if I remember correctly, uh, holly um to the front of it. No, it's Japanese holly to the front of it. Okay, that's for me.
Mike?
Uh, I don't have anything further. It was a very, very, very thorough presentation and I appreciated that. Uh, but I did appreciate uh Mr. Cassidy's comment about our uh. In my humble opinion, dated sign regulations, so I'm excited to see that those are on our agenda for later tonight and uh Mr. Cassidy, maybe someday. It'll be internally lit. Of course.
Okay.
I'd love to talk about it later with you.
Put your guns away. Ann? Ann Erickson? You're muted.
Sorry. Um, first of all, I was gonna say, I just want to second what Melissa said. And one of my biggest questions had been about the landscaping around property, um, which you covered at the very end. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm grateful, as she said, for the thoughts concerning the abutting neighbors. And the more of that you could add, um, the better. Um, in terms of the main retail building, um, I noticed in your overview that you had included a pet washing area. I was wondering if you were doing pet servicing or what would that was, was the reasoning behind that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jim, if you want me to answer, uh, uh, the pet wash station is a self washing station where you can bring your pet. And there's um two tubs that are provided within the room that you can use to wash your dog or your cat or your. Whatever it is you want to bring in. Um, but it's a self wash, uh, you pay a ten dollar fee. They give you the use of the room, they give you this shampoo, they give you the towel, the blow dryer. You know, you can, you can groom your own animal. Uh, they give you a table so you can bring the animal up higher. Um. And but again, it's all self-service. Uh, tractor supply doesn't offer that as a service. Um, they don't have employee staff for that uh or professional care to to handle that kind of a thing. It's a self-service only, but yeah, it's generally what the room is for and um. It prevents the dog from shaking his hair and his muddle over your own bathroom or outside. Or have or having to go in the middle of winter to hose him off after he gets sprayed by a skunk.
So one other thing I'd like to bring up, and this is something that we were doing with um with the zoning applications for these projects is when we actually get this approved. Uh, we need to submit a letter um to the tractor supply uh for the lease. Um, that basically goes through that um that we meet all the zoning requirements and the proposed uses. Uh, it's a form letter they have, um, and we actually are now including it, was included with this application. Uh, what happens is a lot of times we'll go back to the town and, you know, this is just to make sure what's clear. Uh, we're actually proposing, Matt, am I okay to share this?
Uh, yeah, please do.
So as part of your application, uh, this is a standard form letter uh that tractor supply requires us to submit. Uh, and what happens is um we ask that.
And we don't see it.
You don't see it?
Nope.
Is it? Should we have my shared screen? No?
Nope, it's a, I like, I still, I still see the plans. Am I the only one?
Nope. Yeah, we're still not seeing it.
Okay, give me one more second here. Now?
There you go.
Gotcha. Okay, um, so this is the uh standard um zoning compliance letter that we're required to submit as part of a tractor supply. Uh, typically we have the zoning enforcement officers sign off on this, but we figured to go over with you just so everyone's clear and we're proposing out here. Um, it will start off with item number one. Uh, it talks about the merchandise on the sidewalk directly in front of the building. Uh, which we presented again, that's what we call our seasonal uh display area. That's an area that's gonna consist of the um log splitters, the lawn mowers, uh, snow blowers, depending upon what season it is. Uh, in addition to, uh, the next page, uh, we talk about the outside display uh fenced area. Um, that's the area where the larger products are stored, uh, that cannot fit into the store such as. Um, that's the area where the larger products are stored, uh, that cannot fit into the store such as the implements, detractors, corralling, uh, for horses, fences, uh, feet troughs, uh, those larger type items that are not, that cannot be in the store. Um, we also mentioned, uh, number three, there's an outside display merchandise, uh, for permanent trailer, uh, and equipment display. Um, the permanent trailer display is again, uh, landscaping trailers. Uh, the, the small black homeowner type landscaping trailers that you see typically about 12 to 14 feet in length. Uh, number four is the outside display, number one of the propane tank, uh, it's a thousand gallon tank, uh, that is a propane dispensing unit, like when you used to go to, uh, a True Value Hardware or, uh, Ace Hardware, uh, where they have a dispensing unit, it'd be similar to that. It's all within that fenced and outside display area. Um, there's, there's trap, uh, trailers, uh, there are paddle boats, um, motorized vehicles. They do sell such things as, we'll say ATVs or, um, utility type vehicles. Uh, small mini bikes, uh, usually are a seasonal item, uh, UTVs, ATVs. Uh, they're all displayed outside. So again, products that you really cannot keep in the store. Uh, in addition to item number five, um, just wanted to make sure that everyone understands we do have outside display. Uh, uh, no, I'm sorry, number five is, uh, a thing tractor has in their standard letter. Uh, this is for forage. Uh, we corrected for a wrong map, but in this area, uh, we do not have forage. Forage would be hay, hay for horses and those type items. Um, so we do not have, uh, forage here.
Not openly displayed. They, they may have a pallet or two out back when the time is right, but, uh,
The final one that was mentioned is the pet grooming washing services. Uh, that's the, the pet wash, and that's completely inside the building. Uh, but those are the six things that Tractor Supply is gonna want to get signed off on as part of their zoning letter, um, before they would actually finalize the lease, uh, with mark, uh, mark five.
And if I could just clarify, um, a, a couple of things. Tractor Supply, as you know, there's a lot of little nuances that most retailers just don't have. You have the outdoor sales in a fenced area. You have the outdoor sales on the sidewalk. You have a lot of bulky items for sale in, in both of those areas. You have the pet grooming. Well, it's the self, you know, number six should really read self pet grooming and washing. Um, they sell hay, you know, and so there's a lot of little things that we can go ahead and get Tractor Supply approved, the site plan approved, but then run afoul of some of those different uses and we just don't want to ever have to be in that position. Uh, you know, to go the, the distance of, of getting an approval and then not being able to operate to the full capacity that, that they need to operate. Um, so this is a letter. Usually what I do is, is we're asked to get this letter after we receive our approvals and that creates kind of a conflict for the zoning administrators, because now they're, they're almost like giving a second approval to something. They're not, you know, they're not really supposed to grant approval. They're supposed to help you and help me and all that, but, um, to have them sign this is a little bit controversial, I've been finding in different towns. And so, um, I've been presenting this now as part of my application. I, I don't need this letter signed necessarily as is or at all. Um, at a minimum, what I've asked for is in the conditions of approval, should I get approved, um, that these six items maybe be just copied and pasted into the approval, just so that I can show Tractor Supply a document that says, hey, look, not only did I get your site plan approved, but the town is A-OK with, with what you intend to do in the spaces that I, you know, been able to provide approvals for. Um, so if you just understand that, that's where this is coming from. Uh, like I said, Tractor Supply is much more involved than a traditional retail operation is. That's just gonna be confined within a little building, little office space. This is a much, kind of a bigger operation that has a lot of little moving parts to it. And we just want to be fully transparent going into it instead of having to come in after the fact and, oh, by the way, we're, you know, we're doing a pet wash or, oh, hey, we need to sell, you know, propane, something like that. So this is, I hope that, you know, clarifies that and gives you an understanding of what, what we're looking for and why we need it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not kind of, not surprised. We probably will have our town attorney vet it and make sure that he's happy.
Yeah.
Um, once we're happy. Um, any other comments and commissioners? We haven't heard from, um, Diane?
Um, I'll be honest with you, all the questions that I had, um, similarly were with regard to any kind of impact that there would be on the neighbors. Um, I think that most people would welcome the improvement to the site. I think it's a good use and it's certainly a, a site that's fallen into disrepair. So I was at a Tractor Supply yesterday, so I'm personally pretty excited about it. I think it'll be very useful to me personally. Um, but yes, I would just say thanks for the, the thorough presentation, because all my questions got answered throughout. So, um, I, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a question. The, I heard you say, um, Jim, um, that the border adjacent on the south, southern side had a, um, a fence along it now. Is that correct?
This area here? This area here, where my hand is?
Well, between there and the neighbors, actually farther west there.
Yeah, so there's a fence here. Uh, there's a fence down this side and there's a fence down the south side.
Are they stockade fences or are they?
Six foot, six foot high stockade fence.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Yeah, and those remain, right, Jim?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so any other commissioners' questions?
I have a couple more questions, including one as a follow-up on that point. That I, I didn't understand the statement about leaving the stockade fence. I just wanted to be sure, wondered if you could state this differently. Are you removing any of the existing stockade fence?
No.
Okay. Um, another thing, I know, uh, the proposal refers to relative to your propane business. I think I recall reference to underground propane storage tanks.
Yeah, so there's no gas.
Where are they at? Are they marked on this drawing that we're looking at?
So that's, that, that's part of our site utility drawing, like a flip over sheet here. And so we don't have natural gas in the area, um, so we need to heat the building with propane. Um, so we have two tanks, uh, at the back. They're buried, um, in, in this area. So that would be for just for service of the building, to heat the building itself.
And those are inside the setback?
Yes, but there's actually an existing one there right now. So it'd be same as the existing.
Wait, there's no natural gas along Hot Metal Street?
Not that we had any records of.
Not up there, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
All right, I thought it went into Granby.
Wish there were.
There are two tanks back there now that State Line propane fills.
Date wide would know. Thank you.
I know, trust me.
And then I, I have just one more question. I, a point of clarification on the parking, that you're looking for the reduced parking figure. And, uh, I'm not understanding whether you're looking for what amounts to a waiver so that you don't have to build the full required number now, or you're looking for a waiver forever that you'll never be required by the town to have more than the 65.
As a, as a tractor supplier, we look for a waiver of the parking requirements, so we don't have to build them. What we decided is, and we, and we submitted three different municipalities. We can get more municipalities saying that, you know, no more parking spaces do we have and all the other tracks places.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing the request. I'm a regular customer at the, at the Tractor Supply that is right on the border between Winstead and Barcamps that I, I'm not sure what town it's in, but I'm, I have a little summer house up in that area and near frequently. But anyway, it was just, I, I think there was some different terminology used, uh, that I was hearing that was confusing me as to what exactly you. So your request is a waiver forever from a requirement that you
I would say for the use of
Have more than 65 spaces.
Right, for the use as a tractor supply, yes. Um, we don't, we don't need it. If it was another retailer that used it, went in there and needed it, we're showing you there is adequate area for it.
I got it. I got it. I just wanted to be sure I understood what you were asking for. I think I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Any other commissioners?
That was a good final question there, Mr. Elliott.
Okay, we have, uh, opened the questions up to the public. Whether there's anyone, uh, in the public who wishes to speak to us. Mike, have we received any correspondence?
No, Mr. Chairman, I did not receive, uh, correspondence for tonight's, uh, meeting.
I think your dog wants to say something though.
No, I think there's an endorsement.
Yeah, yeah, she wants to go for a walk. That's what she's telling me.
I, I heard grooming.
Uh, hopefully in about six or seven months.
There you go.
Actually, on that grooming room, does it have an interior? Is it, does it have an exterior door or is it, you, you have to walk through the store?
You gotta walk through the store.
So if I bring my horse through, it's gotta go all the way through the store to get to the grooming area?
Sure.
Sure. If your horse will fit in the store.
If it's a pet horse.
It, it's only, the, the door to get in the, it won't fit a horse unfortunately, uh, neither will the tubs, but it's a, it's a regular seven, uh, ish foot door by 36 inches wide. Um, it's like a typical storefront glass door that you open up to the outside to get in. And then, uh, once you're in, you're in a, a waterproof room that has a, uh, the tubs and everything's all filtered, you know, everything's, all the, all the plumbing is exposed. So when the, when the dog fur clogs up the drains, the associate goes in there and cleans it all out and it doesn't ever enter into the wastewater system.
Right, now isn't the way in the back left-hand corner there?
Uh, it's actually, uh, oops, sorry. And when you look at this overlay, um, it's this room right, oh, that room, okay.
Yeah.
Little room right there. So this is the stock room in the back here. This would be the pet grooming room. Uh, this is the manager's office and you have two lavatories and a lounge for the employees back here. So all the main core of that core is all in the back, we'll say southwest corner of the building.
So the animal traffic is through the primary
They'll come through the main door.
Store and through the whole footprint of the store.
Very, very similar to if you went to something like a, um, um, PetSmart and they have the grooming operation at the back and they have veterinary service at the back. They walk right through the store and into those enclosed rooms.
Okay, any more questions?
The one question I would have is the, with the area where you're having the, um, selling the plants and flowers and trees and things like that, is that that's seasonal or that, would that be year round?
Uh, there will be year round merchandise in there, but probably, uh, not probably, but the plants in this client will only be sold for three seasons. The fourth season, the racks may be a little bit empty and they'll focus on, uh, uh, shovels and, and stuff like that that you'll need for clearing snow and things like that. But yeah. Uh, three seasons of plants as much as possible. There are some heaters in there to keep some heat in there, but not enough to maintain year round growth. Um, not, not up here.
Would you also have, um, larger plants like, uh, trees, small trees and things like that? Or just your, your usual garden store stuff?
Not right off the bat. Um, this is a brand new concept and I, I, I physically have seen it in its completion. I, uh, went to the first store that completed done in, um, uh, well, outside of Nashville, uh, a few months ago. And everything that I saw was small hanging style plants, uh, not trees. You know, it's not, not, you're not gonna get bigger, larger, um, pot of things or not pot of things, you know, like rooted things, uh, like you would at Home Depot or Lowe's. But, uh, I would imagine that especially up in this climate where you probably could sell something like that year round, even when it gets cool. You know, maybe they'll implement that, but for now it's all small things that you can, they're gonna, basically everything that they're gonna sell is gonna fit on a six foot by two foot rack that is gonna be on wheels. So they can wheel around, they can move it around, uh, bring it inside, bring it outside, you know, clean it off and, you know, exchange the plants on it. And it'll be plants that you, the, the, the average person will be able to, to reach and grab and, and bring to the cash register themselves. So.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Mike, is there anything that, uh, we need to, um, cover?
Um, well, we're waiting on Jeff Shea, uh, for comments from the engineer, the, uh, town engineer. Um, other than that, I mean, you've hit all the main points on this. Jim did an excellent job of trying to really provide a thorough presentation to the commission. Um, I, I would say that at, at this point to, to, uh, if the commission is, is done with questions or comments, um, that we may have entertained a motion to continue this hearing. Um, I'd like to keep the hearing open only because just in case Jeff has a comment that may result in a change in the, uh, plans, um, I want the public to be able to see this change if it is substantive.
Okay, good. And I have a motion to continue this public hearing.
So moved.
Who's that, Mike?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Anne. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstain, any, any opposed or abstain? Okay, carry six, nothing. Thank you. We will, um, take this up at our next meeting.
Uh, what, when is that? In two weeks, oh, sorry, three weeks. It'll be the first Monday in June, right after Memorial Day. Okay? All right, first Monday in June. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for hearing us tonight and, uh, look forward to seeing you in a few weeks.
Thank you, man.
Bye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, the next order of business would be, um, considering their application, which we're going to table. And now we, um, have the industrial zoning districts to consider. Um, Mike has put together, uh, a memo with all of the things that we had asked him to add and subtract. And, um, the idea here was to make sure that that was what we intended. And then if we agree with that, to set a public hearing date. I would say maybe the second meeting in June, Mike, would that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And what is the date of that?
That would be, pull up my calendar.
21st.
21st? Okay. Uh, everything looks okay to me. How about everybody else?
Hey, I just have one comment. Uh, maybe it's a question, but I, I don't recall. On the second page, the third topic down is, uh, private or commercial recreation such as tennis, yada, yada, yada. There's no change going on here, but, um, does that refer to indoor recreation or both indoor and outdoor? You know, I can see that it's not new language. It's the current. But if we are trying to attract indoor, maybe we should say indoor or we should say indoor or outdoor or, I don't know. It just, it struck me today as something I don't remember a conversation about, but I've seen in, in the regulations in some other towns, a specific reference to indoor when they're talking about allowing it in industrial space, industrial zone. It needs to be indoors. I don't, again, I'm belaboring this, but I don't know if that was our intent or.
Confusion on that score? Mike?
Um, no, I mean, if you want a clarification to say indoor only, that's fine. I can add it to the regs. Um, you know, your exist, like Bruce said, that's your existing regs. You actually, you allow it either indoor or outdoor, because you don't have a, um, you know, a saying, you're, you're not limited just indoor based on the, the open term.
What, I, I don't see an advantage limiting it to just indoor or just outdoor. Some reason?
I just wonder if you have, if it's outdoors, if it doesn't compromise a little bit the attractiveness to abutting areas, you know, the remainder of the industrial zone.
Right, or, or, or to follow Bruce's comment, the impact from other uses to it. Because remember, you are in an industrial zone, so you know, you don't wanna, you want the kids out the tennis court and then next door is right, machine shop or something like that.
Uh, I think at the facility in Farmington that has field, outdoor fields and an indoor facility. And there's, you know, a radio station across the street and a gym and all kinds of industrial uses. Nothing heavy machinery or any of that that I can think of. Um, but, you know, I, I would not want to, if, if someone wanted to come to Simsbury and build a, a, an outdoor recreational facility to, for tennis or for soccer or baseball or something along those lines, I, I think we would be foolish by limiting them to indoor only.
Anybody else?
Especially after a beautiful day like today.
I agree with Mike on that.
Yep. Okay, I, I don't think we should change it. I think we should leave it. Let's, uh, let's fix a day. Let's, let's have a motion to set a public hearing for this, uh, industrial zone changes. industrial zone changes. Somebody want to make that motion?
Oh, I I I have a question. I I can't see where I don't have any picture here. Um Mike, there there was the section where we clarified one A and um and one Bs. And is and we kinda had it backwards as the one B was, you know, we had it backwards and then we just all you did was change the label and I was just wondering for the final draft if we could put the one A first and then the one B with the corresponding instead of the one B first and then the one A second.
Yeah, yes, I will. I I will flip those two.
Right, but I couldn't even find it in today's regulations, so I'm not sure where.
The last page.
It's the last page of the six pages. Yeah. To that memo, six pages long, Kevin, it's page six at the top. That's all that's there. It's just a proposed table.
Yeah, we're gonna flip one, one to be above one, two. I thought we were gonna do that. So do you wanna make a motion in that?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we um that we go to public hearing with our proposed regulations, change the regulations on on June twenty one.
Second that.
A discussion. Um we do have to send it to planning, right, Mike?
Yes. And they'll meet they they'll have a meeting between uh now your today and your scheduled public hearing. So we'll we'll follow our statutory timeframes.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions?
All in favor? As as a point of clarification, though, the thing that gets sent out, the thing that we ask the public to consider and the thing that we look at on June twenty first is the same first five pages and page six will have this thing. I one on top, I two. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Melissa, you can vote.
I can't put on industrial regulations right now?
No. Okay, six, nothing varies. Okay, well, anybody opposed? Okay, so we'll set a public hearing for the twenty first. Or we need a I think we need a clean draft of the regs as they would be. And then something explaining what got deleted and what got added. Okay. All right, the other thing, the next thing is our we wanted to have a discussion of internal light, I think, is basically the philosophical question we want to talk about. And uh the sign regulations before we get Bobby D back. That correct?
And can I take part in this conversation, Dave?
Um, yes, you can.
Okay. Good, cuz I had some concerns about what we have so far.
Okay, um this is about the philosophical question, Melissa, about whether we should have internally lit signs or ban them as we have now. There's a couple of us that feel that we should permit internally lit signs of some sort of some form or other in some places or other. And Kevin is, I think, one of the people that believes that we should not have internet signs. So that's where we start. Um is there any grounds for discussion?
Wow. There's always some grounds for discussion, but I feel as Kevin does, I feel strongly that one of the, you know, underappreciated and distinct features of of Simsbury is that we don't have the the internally lit signage all over the place or neon signs. And as I think Kevin mentioned during the actual meeting with De Crescenzo, people don't realize when they drive through Simsbury, all of the elements that make up that visual of town. And that's one of them. I think it's important. But I I did hear Bob De Crescenzo affirming repeatedly that we can regulate different sections of town differently. And uh I I can understand that the 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 argument to be made for businesses on Route forty four where um they're so close to the other towns and they're competing. And um you know, to the extent that they feel it's a disadvantage, I think, you know, it's something we might want to give further thought to. But I I I think that trying to then provide it, you know, on one side of a shopping plaza and not on um gets a little complicated, but you know, it could be articulated that it's you know, the west end of uh you know, the south end of Bushy Hill Road within you know, X number of feet of Route forty four and on the eastern side so that we don't drag this thing over onto the other side of Bushy Hill Road where there's no commercial. I've I've, you know, in in place at this time.
Yeah. To me, uh there's some there are some neon signs that are works of art. And you know, to ban something that might be a work of art because you don't want neon signs, I don't think is is necessarily justifiable. There's also um a lot of new technologies for creating signs, including digital just total digital toys that can display almost anything. Um and so those new technologies um are different. I I understand and I agree that we don't want any of those, you know, the plastic boxes with neon bulbs in the middle of them that are ugly and and we wouldn't want them either. So is there some some way we can adapt to the newer technologies um without opening the door to to anybody and everything in terms of lighting?
Does anybody know if Avon and Canton do have do permit internally lit signs?
Well.
I think Canton does.
I'm not sure the wording of their regulations, but they certainly permit neon signage. For sure.
So and and it's funny cuz I would normally think I would side with the 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 lighted signs, but I think there is something about Hop Meadow Street in particular in Simsbury going up and down that has a very classic look like that you said is you don't realize what it is, but I think it is the signage. And so I don't think Avon and Canton compare. They don't have a downtown like we do. Like my husband and I always talk about how Simsbury is so great cuz it's got that downtown and you know, those towns don't have that center like we do. And so I I I would I totally agree on the uh on the ends. I would maybe even consider on the north end of town, definitely on forty four. Um but I would I would want that main area on Hop Meadow and all the little side streets, I would agree to not keep them lit, I think, or you know, go with the old school lighting. How's that?
Well, we have a case, we have a case in Weetag. The Weetag barber shop had a barber pole sign forever, as far as I know. When I lived there from nineteen seventy six on, that sign was there. Um the barber shop, the guy retired, the barber shop was vacant for a while and the new people came in and Hiram told them that that sign was abandoned, they could not replace. And I think that was that was maybe a mistake that doesn't relate to internally internally lit, but it was because it was internally lit that Hiram told him that. Um I think that's wrong. That I mean, that was a historical sign. So some of these things are historic and and we really would add to the charm. The the Pontiac sign that Mitchell had, I think there was one time the town made them retain it.
Wow. I that that barber shop opened in nineteen sixty six. That guy from Boomfield had for so many years, he retired. You know, just you know, with within the last decade, uh he retired, but like maybe sixty five. He opened the first year I worked at the gas station that used to be right there for Mitchell's. Well, yeah, then then used to be Weetag Garage, but um I think, you know, I I would have made a different interpretation of the situation than Hiram Peck did, but yeah.
Oh, I encourage you all to go for a drive tonight uh after this meeting and identify the various internally lit signs that are around town already. They're out there. Right? And conforming or not, or you know, grandfathered in or whatever, you know, we already have internally lit signs in town and downtown too. Right, right in front of right in front of the funeral home. Or internally lit signs.
My concern be ambient lighting, um obviously. And you know, we're we're always struggling with, you know, Dave mentions Weetag. We're struggling with what to do about kind of Weetag Center. We had that B one application that was that was denied. Um and I think that probably if we're talking about Hot Meadow or Weetag or anything like that, we probably I I think that that is putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to figure out what we're doing about Terriffel or Weetag or any of these particular areas. The only place that I would right now support is right on forty four. I wouldn't even go as far as Bushy Hill. Um because I think we do need to strive to maintain um that sense of place that is Simsbury. Um we don't want that to get lost.
I don't think anybody wants to wants to make anything worse. But we're I don't think we we are really in the eighteenth century either.
It for me, it's it's some of the silly stuff like forcing gas stations to have to manually change numbers. Right? When when digital uh dispensaries and I drive an electric vehicle, right? So I'm not some of course, I work for a petroleum company, so I'm on both sides of the fence, but you get my point, right? Full disclosure. Um you know, it 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 it's a, you know, it it's unfortunate that all of those displays can't be somewhat, you know, can't be digital and you know, require a all that plastic and all of that fun stuff that needs to be manually managed.
Why don't we make a distinction between internally lit signs and digital signs?
If the size of it matters, digital could end up being worse than than internally lit. I think it probably comes down to size and and the um not sure where the right word is, but how much light it throws off, you know? Wattage, is that what you call it? Wattage?
Well, one of one of my hopes is that our process will lead us to a point where we can all look at each other and without smiling or winking, we can say that our language in our zone and our zoning regulations will not permit another Toyota sign to show up on a building in Simsbury. Um I've never heard a satisfactory expression for how that got approved, but that's an internally lit sign. And the contention that it's part of the wall, that doesn't do it, not like eggs spelled backwards on the barn on on West Mountain Road or or anything else. That's an internally lit sign and out there, that's not a sign, that's artwork. I know that. I was looking at it just this week again. And I'm I'm not disputing that, but you know, that's more than just a fig leaf. That's a reasonable explanation for eggs spelled backwards, but I've never heard an acceptable explanation given our regulations and there haven't been substantial changes here in a long time. That Toyota thing irritates me and others when we go by there. It's so out of character with what we're trying to do here.
But but Bruce, the sign itself is not translucent, it's solid, right? The letters are solid.
No, the letters are illuminated at night. When you drive by there, you can see it from outer space, I think, where the Toyota dealers.
I thought that they were were solid red letters and the light from the from the wall was what was
No, I don't think so. That's a that's an explanation. I haven't sort of pondered. I don't believe it's factual.
Anyway, well, I'm not gonna drive through it tonight cuz I'm
No, no, no.
Much to Mike's regret.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it it it's my point, right, is there's that sign, there's there's a a new restaurant at the north end of town and a fish a tropical fish store at the north end of town with signs that uh are uh are lit.
Yeah. Well, we can work like crazy on the language of our regulations, but we're not in the zoning enforcement business.
And I agree.
Although maybe we are, I don't know.
Many of those have been there a long time, Mike. Emmons and Antonio's all are grandfathered. Um doesn't necessarily mean just because there are some that are grandfathered, doesn't mean we want everyone to become internally lit.
Yeah, I get that, but is there some tasteful way to be able to say if it fits this? We'll allow it and not have the Las Vegas, you know, blinking lights that are all distracting and painful to look at and all that fun stuff. But you know, is there is there a way to 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 shape this in a way that allows those, you know, grandfathered in, nonconforming, whatever they are um in, you know, and and the the forty four thing is a no brainer, right? I agree with that, but you know, I just wish that we could shape it in a way that uh, you know, it I I drive through tiny little towns in Maine that have, you know, internally lit signs and they're not everywhere. But it's still the same little quaint New England town, but you know, the gas station has numbers on the thing that aren't pieces of plastic that you can't see unless you're sitting on top of it. And uh and you know, the the signs for the stores are tasteful because that's, you know, what businesses do these days.
I think that's a practical consideration that that we should that we should consider and include. I mean, there's got to be a tasteful little wattage way for gas stations to be able to flip their to flip their numbers. That that just makes common sense. I agree with you there. Um but I think we need to define narrowly what those practicalities are.
But look at another example. Look, think of the tasteful little villages in Maine. When you drive past a set of of cottages, there's a neon sign that says no vacancy that they turn on in a lot of places. And that's quaint. I mean, it's like it's in the eye of the beholder in a way. What we want to be able to do is to have them bring a design to us and have us be able to say yes or no arbitrarily. We can't do that, I don't think.
No, you can't do that. That's why you you either say yes or no. And you talk about the digital ones and the graphics. There was one down on uh Berlin Turnpike that they put right near the road that I don't know, Mike, if you ever go down that way. But that's frightening. Um it's a scary sign. It's it's right on, you know, on the right next to the highway and it changes. And it's, you know, it it flashes and it's it's dangerous.
Yeah, unfortunately, uh from a marketing perspective, it's highly effective, right? There's one of those in Norwalk and other parts of the world too. So I know exactly what time you're talking about. Um yeah.
Get attention.
It it is, yeah, and and you know, I there's gotta be another way to control something along those lines, right, in our regulations.
Why don't we ask Bob D if there's some way to uh put some sort of a distinction together um to not permit internally lit, but to permit other technologies if we can define them. And then we can define define where they can be used and what sizes they can be and what brightness they can be. I mean, had those factors already in the in the language we had.
You know, the last time we revised um the sign reg, we worked with the chamber. Um actually, Dick Wagner was on their committee, I remember that. And when we had extensive discussions, you remember that, Dave and or or Bruce?
No, I don't.
I don't.
Yeah, no, they were very involved. They actually, you know, this chamber actually set up their own sign committee to to work with us. Um and you know, I don't know why, but it doesn't seem to have to be a a burning spot with them anymore. And maybe Ron knows from EDC. But you know, we don't, I don't, I don't hear from a bunch of business people saying our sign regs are impossible now. And you know, I don't hear anyone saying that, you know, they're losing business because they can't have a neon sign in front of their 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 property. Um so I'm not sure there's a burning desire to change that.
Tractor Supply just showed in front of us and said that they wish it was different, right?
Yeah, and he didn't say any problem when he said no, did he?
No.
It's it's not an issue.
Fair point.
It's not an issue. I mean, I mean, everyone would say, yeah, you know, that's standard, but um you know, the mobile uh gas stations used to be internally lit, you know, and ours was not. And I don't think they lost a gallon, you know, a sale of a gallon of gas because of it.
Right.
Yeah, but not not letting them change their their prices is I think that's arbitrary and
Well, no, it's not because I again, I don't think any of them have
Unnecessary.
Have found it that big a deterrent that they're gonna say I think can't sell in Simsbury because they don't allow a digital sign.
But I think there's that that connection between the issue that the gas gas station owners might all Issue that the gas, gas station owners might all bring to our attention is not They're trying to link the illumination with the, the electronic change. And so, you know, if they had a white screen and no lighting, but a white screen and black lettering. I don't know why they don't propose doing that and just acknowledge that we're not going to let them put lights on in there. And, and so you can't see it very well at night. Well, you can't see it very well at night the way it is. It's just replicating electronically what's being done today. It's, I, I don't know why that didn't come first or hasn't come back to us from companies in particular, but.
Uh, their, their point was that it takes some labor to do it.
I know, but my point is I'm sure there's, there's an electric slash electronic solution. That doesn't involve lighting the letters or the numbers.
Because the pumps themselves are actually digital. When you get down to the pump where it actually has the price per gallon. They're all digital, so it actually does have a digital display on it. And I don't know if they do them all at once or if they set them by machine.
The illumination's from the front. I think it's around the edge or something. But I don't, I don't know. And I don't want to belabor it because I don't know, but I think there's another solution that Could do and make it electronic and also not involve.
They are reflective LCD displays. Where digitally they could change them with a uplighting on them. To see. So there's, there's some ways to do it digitally that aren't internally lit. But I think at night it's a lot easier to see it, see it if it's internally lit.
Kevin, to your question, I've heard more about branding colors from companies than I hear about light, lighted signs.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we have the rule in town center that, you know, it has to be the There are very restrictive about, you know, it has to be white background with black, blue or
Right.
Burgundy maybe colors and that's the only thing we allow. Although, you know, I do think that, you know, as much as Fitzgerald Plaza gave us a hard time, they came back and actually the sign looks pretty good.
I think it looks very good myself, but you know, that's just me. The fact that it's uniform in terms of it's a white sign with black lettering. The fonts aren't all the same, but the lettering's all black and I think
And that's an attractive sign versus
It's a nice, simple look, yeah.
But, you know, and that's easy for us who all know where all the stores are in town, but someone new driving through town. You know, in the middle of a snowstorm, trying to find someplace. And yeah, I get it. It's close to the road. You can see it anyway, but You know, a, 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 a well-designed light also increases safety, believe it or not. Right? A, a well-designed, well-lit sign increases safety.
While they were proposing internally lit there, they were proposing multiple colors.
Right. They were proposing the logos for the
Yeah. So there was the upset there wasn't over the uplighting that was required. It was, you know.
Each box wanted to be a different color.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I definitely wouldn't want to see nine different Colors there. I, I agree. That would
Yeah.
Be difficult, but they're, you know, Support their brands better.
Well, I, I do have to go back to an earlier remark illustrating using Vincent's Funeral Home as an illustration of Some sort of violation that I just came across recently, the fact that that building was purchased. It was a residence and was purchased in nineteen fifty two by Charles H. Vincent and converted to a funeral home. So it's, it's possible. Now I've lived here all my life and I can't remember another sign in front of it. So it's been there. That's a grandfather.
And I, and I, I was not inferring that any of those signs were nonconforming and Or nor that I know whether they were or they weren't. I didn't do any of that research. My point was there are a bunch of internally lit signs around town already. That was it, right? I'm not passing blame.
I'm in agreement.
Right. But you don't want everybody to convert. And actually, there's a street number down on the medical building down in Wheaton. It's a number that is very glaring in the night, in the night. And I, I don't know if it's internally littered or backlit or how I would
Yeah, I feel like it's haloed, but, but I
Yeah, but it's, it's very bright. I mean, it's obnoxious. I mean, you might say that it's a good safety thing. I find it obnoxious.
It's bright. I've seen that one.
As, as someone who's been out in a delivery truck trying to find people's homes on their houses. That's, that's, you know, a big deal. The first thing I did when I, when I bought my home was put numbers on the front door because I knew I was going to be swinging a hammer. And I wanted the ambulance to be able to find me when I dialed nine one one.
Well, that's a town rig anyhow. Yeah, that's a red.
It is, but you wouldn't believe the number of houses in town without numbers, believe me.
No, but the fire department, I'm sure they have, you know, they've tried to get compliance, but They're not totally successful. I know where we have our little summer spot in Bar Campstead. Bar Campstead in New Hartford, and I'm sure there are other communities have these numbers that are available. That you nail on the closest telephone pole or you put a stack in your yard, but they're reflective numbers for your house number. We see a lot of that. Actually, I think the fire department provides them for free or for a small donation. Yeah.
So how should we proceed? Should we get the chamber to weigh in?
I like that idea.
I, I do too. And that would, if, if no businesses are asking for it, I back down, right? It, I, I'm I'm just trying to be a voice to support what they may possibly need.
Yeah, I, I would like to
If we got a survey of the town, I think people would support no backlit signs.
Know what?
Probably.
But I'm, I'm not sure that that's really the best thing for us To do, recognizing the changes that are happening in technology. And what could be? And somehow or other, it comes down to aesthetics. And, and I don't know how we can deal with that. So maybe we should hear from some other people and what their opinions are on this subject before we close the door. That's all.
Could, could I suggest also including Main Street into that conversation? Just since we get, try to, try to hit the largest group of businesses that we can. I, I think that might yield some information, but I think to the extent that we can inquire about Sort of the basis for, for whatever the thinking is, it could just be somebody offering It's my creative thought process that leads me to think that we should have, you know, all orange and black signs or something, but Tell, tell us something about why versus to distinguish between our own opinions. If there's information, if there are surveys being done by chambers of commerce across the country on this issue. Or some other source that would help us to, you know, feel some weight. Regarding different scenarios versus what we have in Simsbury.
And to Melissa's point, I'm curious which one there's less light pollution in, right? The, the uplit sign from the ground or an internally lit sign, right? And there's probably Arguments on both sides of that.
Yeah, because we actually have some uplets signs that are very bad in town. Because the vegetation is no longer around them and they're almost blinding to traffic. You know, because we have the lights on both sides of the sign, so it can, you know, it can light.
Well, there might be room for improvement with our lighting regulations because I know Jeff Shay has spent a lot of times developing the plan he showed us last month or a couple of weeks ago. But the town hall parking lot, anybody who was there, you know, at night would realize there, there was a big opportunity for improvement. And it was needed. And so hopefully, you know, we're on the right track, but The existing regulations, you could be in compliance and still have something that was pretty shadowy and not very helpful.
And we probably should ask for downlit lights instead of uplit lights.
You're right. Yeah.
Yeah, actually the uplit lights are not dark sky conforming.
Right, they're not.
So, um, anyway, I don't think we've got a, a critical timeline with the sign regs.
It is a touchy subject, so it's good to get involvement from the business community.
Get a lot of people involved, the better off we are. Yeah. So let's, let's reach out to, as they used to say, reach out To Main Street and the Chamber and ask them if they'd be involved and the EDC as well.
And would the reach out involve sharing of this twenty page? Seventeen page document that Bob has recommended to us?
I, I don't, I wouldn't put it out there as a recommendation. You know, I would just like to see what they would like to see changed in our, in our sign regulations.
Current sign. If any, if any.
Yeah, yeah. Rather than throw something out, I'd like to see their input just to see what they think needs.
But Bob's document is public.
Pardon me?
Right. But I wouldn't want to put it out as this is what we're looking at as a consideration because it was something he put together and wasn't a consent of Of the board commission.
I, I, I don't know. I think giving them public documents isn't hurting anything.
Yeah, they, are they going to read it? Seventeen pages? I don't know.
But some of them will.
Yeah, that's true.
Ron's been at our meeting. He, he knows that there's this document in existence, so I, I don't think, I think it would be disingenuous to sort of hide it from People you're asking their opinion of.
If speaking of that document, this is a public document, may I ask you a question about that?
I don't know.
So, um, the question is, I can ask the question, I already did. So the question is, I, I think that there are still some provisions in this that may run afoul of REE V Gilbert. Which is the US Supreme Court case about content-based regulations. But that's kind of like a nerdy legal discussion and I'm wondering who the correct person is to have that conversation with. Is it In the context of this or is it, you know, me talking to Mike Liddon or calling Bobby and say, hey, I think this provision runs afoul of REE V Gilbert still?
Why don't you make your notes on a copy, give it to Mike and then he'll take it to Bobby D.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anything else, Mike?
No, no, I'll, I'll proceed then, reaching out to the Chamber and to Main Street and look for some Potential input from our business community on this, on the, the subject. Just for clarification though, on The role of Bob Di Crescenzo, he committed to do some more work on this Related to this document in that meeting of two weeks ago. Has any of that come back or we're just?
We asked him to wait until we finish the philosophy.
Oh.
We ought to reach out to the people in, in along forty four too. They're probably, I don't know that they're in the chamber. Like Staples.
Oh yeah, there's a liquor store there too.
Liquor store.
Yeah. And, and I, I have the contact for the new owner of Simsbury Commons, so maybe I'll check in with him to see What's his feelings?
Okay.
I actually, what I was looking at when I asked the question really was, I have a note here that Bob is researching Whether signs can be exempted from ZBA appeal. It doesn't have anything to do with elimination, but it might be a topic, but fundamentally, if It's outside of ZBA, that would be good to know. But I think it would be good to know and if he's waiting for some reminder That he was going to look into it.
How can you be outside of ZBA?
Well, you guys talked about it. I didn't make the
No, I raised the question and he said
He said he would look into
Say that it couldn't be overwritten by ZBA.
Oh, that's interesting.
Because they do override a lot of our stuff that
Yeah.
I wouldn't, you know, that, that we would not.
Would that be a straight appeal to a court then? Kind of a necessarily expensive step possibly.
Who knows? We don't know.
We're hoping Bob D enlightens us before we do, you know? All right, if he's going to.
Let's have a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Mike Doyle, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Anne. All in favor?
Bye.
All opposed?
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for
Good night, everyone.